Didn't let somebody sit in there when we get there. Oh, hello there. Anybody home?
Demonstrating how the speakers are working.
Yeah, that's better than it has been in a while.
I'm gonna have to shut that off. Wow.
It doesn't shut off. Look.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Meeting of October 2nd, 2018. Roll call, please.
Four selectmen are present. Mr. Scasiadis absent, and the town administrator, town council is also not here this evening.
Announcements. Mary?
You want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Oh, sorry. Another senior moment.
Who's doing it?
Mr. Browning is.
Mr. Browning. Pledge of Allegiance, unified, of the United States of America.
Nice job. Now we have announcements.
Okay, let's try the announcements again. Mary? Peter, you have to have a couple.
Yeah, the Redevelopment Authority will be holding a public workshop meeting on Thursday, October 4th, that's this Thursday, at 7:30 over in the Town Hall Auditorium. This is to discuss the proposed overlay district, zoning overlay district for the Elm Street area, including the Tremont Nail Factory. So you'll have an opportunity to show up, see what the plans are, public comment, public input. This is also in addition to another actual public hearing on, as continued from the original public hearing back in August, that was held on this, that the planning board will be having on the 15th. So this is a precursor to that, so that we can finalize the bylaw as we intend to present it to town meeting, get the planning board to weigh in, and then go from there. So everybody's invited to attend. Also, at the same time, for efficiency's sake, the Organa Brands, which is the company that is seeking to use the property to manufacture marijuana products, not grow, not sell, but just manufacture marijuana products, is doing their public outreach meeting. This is something the state requires for any business that proposes to do business anywhere in Massachusetts. So they're gonna be there as well. People can ask questions, find out what kind of jobs are available. I understand they even have a place, they even have planned to have a table set up where people can potentially drop off resumes. So if you're interested in this issue, that's the time to come and find out about it.
Patrick?
Okay, I have one. Dining for a Cause. The 99 Restaurant invites you to a fundraising benefit for the Wareham Firefighters Association on Thursday, October 11th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the 99 at Rosebrook Plaza. Now, you present the coupon, if you can find one of these things, a little coupon thing, and I think they're available at the restaurant and various other places. The 99 will donate 15% of the guest checks to the organization. So you go, you eat, you enjoy, and they give 15% of your check right away over to the Wareham Fireman's Fund. So that's October 11th. That's all I have for announcements.
Okay.
What, elections?
I'll get there in a minute.
Yeah, I got all those. I'm just pulling up the dates, because I'm sure they're on the website.
I've got Grumpy's Cranberry Harvest 5K Run and Walk, which we've been doing the last few years. It's on November 3rd, 9:00 a.m. It's a trail, you can run or walk. I usually walk a little bit while I'm standing there. It's at the 80 Makepeace at 150 Tyonet Road, Wareham, Mass. Let me read exactly all the information. Join us for the annual Grumpy's 5K and enjoy this unique family-friendly trail run around the cranberry bogs during the harvest season. Runners, walkers, nature enthusiasts, environmentalists, and cranberry lovers of all age will enjoy this 5K. A special display of Robert Grumpy Conway's nature-inspired photographs will be available during viewing, excuse me, during the race. Free tee-shirt, catered lunch, and prizes. Register at www.grumpy5k.racewire.com. It's a fun time. It's fun to see all the people in Wareham walking through there and running, and the kids especially. That's all I have.
Yes, a couple others.
Go ahead, you can do the election stuff if you like.
Yeah. If you haven't registered to vote and wish to participate in the fall town meeting on October 22nd, you have exactly 53 minutes to get to the clerk's office. They're open until 8 o'clock tonight, so get a move on if you want to vote for that. The last day to register for the state election, which is November 6, 2018, will be Wednesday, October 17th until 8:00 p.m. And my understanding is, for that day, I believe that's the only, the only business that they will transact at the clerk's office is registering people for that election. I think I read that somewhere.
Not sure.
So if you're seeking to do town business another day, even if it's not actually that formal, give the clerk's office a break and go to your business some other day, because they'll be registering a bunch of people at the last minute, I'm sure.
I have a couple other things, too. The Cranberry Fest is this weekend, a harvest celebration. It's at Tyonet Road, 158 Tyonet Road. It's the 6th and the 7th. It's a great time, it's been a great time, and I understand that this is its last year. So you might want to go over there and check this out. If you haven't been there, you should go check it out anyway, because it was always a good time for everybody. The next thing is, is that the school building committee is going to have a couple of sessions, one at the library, that's going to also take people to the various schools for viewing and so on. And believe it or not, I don't have the dates with me, but if you go to the website, they have a website up for the new school. Go to the website, the times and places are there. One of them will be a really good thing, because you'll be able to get the information, and then you'll be able to go see the two schools. They're gonna open up the minor schools so they can see it, and they're gonna let them see the deacon's school, so everybody knows why they're replacing them, and so on and so forth. And there's be a lot of good information. So you should probably try to get over there and see those things. And that's it. Citizens' comments.
Any citizens' comments tonight?
No, she's not here.
I know she's not here. None of my others.
Board comments.
Mary? Peter?
Yeah, it's kind of amazing to me that after all of the discussion about the financing for the proposed new elementary school, that there's people out there that still don't seem to understand some of the basic premises here. There's still people saying, "Well, I don't understand why you don't renovate the schools, because that would be a lot cheaper." And, you know, as Selectman Troppiano said last week, that's not the case. The school building authority, the state school building authority, said, "We will not give you money to do that." They insisted that a new school be built. It would cost something in the order of $75 million to renovate those buildings and bring them up to code, which is what you would have to do. Once you start going into a building and you start renovating it, you don't get to renovate it to 1974 standards or 1987 standards. Once you do a certain amount of work on a building, you've got to bring it up to the most current level of code. In order to do that, it would cost $75 million to do that kind of work to both deacons and minor, to keep both schools. And the state, the school building authority wouldn't reimburse us a dime for that. So that would be $75 million that the taxpayers would have to spend. Under the current proposal, the one new school to replace the two old ones would cost $90 million. The state would reimburse 75% of the reimbursable costs, which is not everything, but it's a good chunk of it. The state would be giving us $50 million, and the residents would have to come up with $40 million. So that's what's being sought at both town meeting and in the general election on November 6th, is the authorization to go ahead and do that. Town meeting actually authorizes the expenditure. The election actually authorizes the ability to go ahead and tax the amount, if you will. My understanding is that it's gonna be a 20-year bond, is what they've asked.
Get to that, yeah.
To pay for. You know, the information on the cost and so on and so forth. If it's not up on their website now, it certainly should be soon enough. I would suggest everybody educate themselves on this. Don't rely, as Patrick says, on coffee shop rumors or what you hear at the stop and shop when you're in line. You know, get the actual facts. And, you know, you may decide that you want to support the proposal after you hear the actual facts. You may decide you don't. It's not my intention to try to persuade anybody one way or another, but I think everybody has a civic responsibility before they either show up at town meeting or step into a ballot box to know exactly what's going on.
Patrick?
All right, so just to dovetail on him a little bit. So the number is, it's around $91 million total, with a lot of state reimbursements and so on. It ends up being somewhere in the range, and I'm gonna give you a pretty close range, and I think it's pretty accurate. It'll be around 80 cents, a thousand. So if you take your tax bill and you look up the assessed value of your home, and you take that and you multiply it out by 80 cents for every thousand of value, that'll tell you what it's gonna cost you. All right? That's the simple way. And that'll be the true number. You know, I know that there's some numbers out there about the median price, and this is gonna cost this and so on. Look, it's easy. Take your tax bill, take the 80 cents number. It might be 79 when it's done, it could be 76, it might be 81, but it's in that range. Take that number, multiply it out, and that'll tell you what you're gonna spend per year for your share of that building. Okay? And that's really the simplest way to do it, and I hope everybody will do that. And again, like Peter was saying, please find out the information. Understand about why we're not remodeling and we're doing whatever. You know, we're totally, when we want the state to pay for a 75% chunk of the proposed projects, we have to do what they tell us to do, which means we had to go through a big elaborate thing and coming up with numbers and paying engineers to come up with numbers of what it would cost to renovate. And then, of course, they had to come down and look at the buildings, go through the buildings and say, "Okay, yeah, the buildings..." No, the SBA came back and said, "No, you're not gonna renovate, you're gonna build a new building." And by the way, it's the first time that they've ever allowed two schools to be built on the same property, so it's one school. They've never done that. Never been allowed, they've never done it, which means we've made a good case.
Yes.
There was a... Which means essentially there was such a strong need.
Yes.
It wasn't just a case, it was they toured our facilities, they saw the need.
Yeah, they did. And, you know, and we jumped through a lot of hoops that nobody's ever jumped through before. They came up with new hoops for us, in fact, that they've never used for anybody else. And we did every one of those hoops. We jumped through everything they wanted us to tell them. And it cost a lot of money to do, but guess what? It was worth it, because they then said, "You know what? We're gonna give you exactly what you need." And that's the point, exactly what we need. So, and I'm not, look, I'm gonna vote for it myself. You don't have to vote for it, but at least know the information when you go in the booth and know the facts, so you can make an informed decision. That's all I'm asking from anybody. Make an informed decision that you know, not just, you know, "Well, somebody told me such and such, and that was it." I don't want that to happen. All right, the next thing I want to talk about is this 40B project, which now, I guess the hearing is closed.
Yes.
And I'm really disappointed in all the effort that's gone into trying to, trying to stop this project from happening. I don't think we've done enough, in my opinion, up here at this board. I don't think anybody's done enough. I don't think this, I think the sewer department made a mistake by allowing that, in, based on the formula that I saw, based on the report, although I guess the guy's willing to take that out of the report if, if we're allowed to, if, if we're allowed, DEP allows us to allow the overflow to go on the ground, everything's great.
What?
That's ridiculous. Absolutely the most ridiculous thing I heard anybody say, because somebody's gonna have to clean it up. And that's not free. It's not free. So just because we can accept it right now, and there's no storm going on, that's baloney, in my opinion. And we didn't do anything right here, as far as I'm concerned. We didn't do it right, I didn't know how to stop it, I tried everything I could to get them to put the things in and say, "No, enough is enough." Everybody should be shut off right now. They shouldn't be letting anybody into the sewer department until they resolve that issue, in my opinion. And that's just one issue, not to mention all the other issues that have got to go on. I don't know where we're getting the money to pay for those children that are gonna be coming into that place, I don't know where the money's coming from. Derek, you know where the $12,000 per student is coming from? No. $12,000 a student, right? So if there's 2.3 kids, which is what the law, which is roughly, and I didn't make that number up, the state uses that number. It's their number, 2.3 per house. So if it's 2.3 per house, and it's $24,000 plus to send those kids to school, and we're getting maybe, you know, $1,200, $1,500 in taxes a year, that's a pretty big loss. And in my opinion, it's a shifting of costs from the state to everybody else, as they did last week, when they told us we have to clean our catch basins every, twice a year for 400 grand. This is out of control, and I don't know how we're gonna stop it. We got to stop it somehow, but I don't know what it is. Somebody help me. Something's gotta happen.
At least it can succeed.
Huh?
It can succeed from the beginning.
Whatever it is, it's just getting stupid now. You know, the whole world seems to have lost its mind.
Got a lot more coming.
Not that I haven't, but you know what I'm saying. It's just, it is absolutely dumbfounding that these kinds of things can happen, and then all of a sudden they say, "Okay, you're stuck with it, they're gonna build these things." And then they want, like, years to build it out. How do we know what the sewer department's gonna look like five years from now? And actually, I think they want eight years. It's just dumbfounding, and I don't know how to stop it. In my opinion, the letter we was gonna send out to the, to the, what do you call it there? The, what do they call them? The state guy there.
Auditor.
Huh?
The auditor?
The auditor. That never got sent. We didn't send that letter. Would've been a good letter, at least it would've been an argument. At least it would've been something, but that letter never went. I asked for it. Asked council to write one, he did. We never sent it. What's wrong with us? Shame on us. Shame on us. All right, I've sat on the box enough. I know you want to get out of here, so I'll just shut my mouth and move on, I guess.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to reinforce a few simple facts, so everybody really understands. The vote at town meeting, again, is strictly to authorize the town to borrow money for the project. It has nothing to do with the actual project itself unless it goes through the ballot question and is approved. So please understand, if you vote yes for the question at town meeting, I think it's October 22nd, that is strictly to allow the town to borrow funds in order to pay for it. We have to borrow the full amount, and then what comes back is whatever the net is, it gets adjusted as you go. The other piece we have is, on the 40B project, people have to understand that we never had a chance from day one. The simple reason is that the state of Massachusetts has basically developed a policy that there are not enough affordable housing units available in the state, and they have made it a priority, and they've made it a priority in such a way that 40B projects, workforce housing, et cetera, is basically given free rein to come in and do whatever they have to do to get it done. And the town has very little chances whatsoever. We fought. I know I was there three or four times at the ZBA meetings, Patrick's been there, Peter's been there. Basically, every time we asked for something, the answer was no. Either they didn't want to do it, didn't have to do it, or whatever. So this board actually has tried really hard. It's very difficult, because when you get in there, you know, before you even start, that you can't win. Because at the end of the day, if we said no, it goes before another board controlled by the state, and that board there basically has told people, "You really don't want to come before us, because you're not gonna like your answer that you're gonna get," which means you're gonna lose. So it is what it is. They don't seem to care about what happens to the town financially, how it ends up, how it affects the town all the way around, but that's it. So it is frustrating, and, you know, I kind of sit there with a smiling joke, we should succeed and become our own little country, but that doesn't work either. That was a movie that, I remember, I think there was some country that came back to the U.S. that has to be invaded. I don't know if you remember that one. It was cute. It was a country, a little small country in Europe. They cleared war.
The Mouse That Roared, that was the name of the movie. Yeah, it was in the early 60s.
Yeah, they declared...
Peter Sellers was in it.
Yeah, they declared war on the United States, so you could get all kinds of money that way. So either way, I'm smiling, but I'm very unhappy, and it just, you know, you have all the plans, Mr. Sullivan's been working for the last four years, just find ways to save money and do everything we have to do, and it's like, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
It really doesn't. At the end of the day, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
That's it for me.
It's just sad.
Okay, appointments, reappointments, interviews?
We have, no, we have none.
Okay, next up is the Buzzard's Way Garage for a name change application.
Come on down.
Up, sir. Please give us your name. Henry DeJesus?
Okay, so this is a problem with a name. When he went to get plates, it caused some name issues, so they couldn't give him his plates. So this is a correction in the name.
Yes.
It's going to be, it's supposed to be DBA Buzzard's Way Garage, is what it ends up being. And I think they did Buzzard's Bay Garage or something, and...
What ended up happening is, I needed a sales tax number, so my lawyer applied for one, and he put it in the name of Buzzard's Way Garage, Inc., which wasn't the original name on the license. So when it came back and I handed the papers in, I didn't even catch it. And they bounced it back and said, "It doesn't match, you need it to say Buzzard's Way Garage, Inc."
Okay. Can I? I gotta ask you a couple of questions.
Sure.
So you rent the bays there?
Yes.
To someone to do service?
Yes.
You know, that's a problem, right?
I didn't know.
Now you're running two businesses on the same property, and a license is supposed to be the principal owner, is supposed to be running the, running for the license. It's a complication that we need to talk about, that we'll need to talk about, okay? Now that you're renting the thing. Secondly, you have a nine-car license, and everybody knows that you have way more than nine cars displayed out there. I've gone by, went by as early as today, and I counted the cars, because we were coming in tonight, and I wanted you to understand. Now, it's not about beating you up about your business, we want you to make money. But you have a plan, right, that you put in? And the plan has places for customers' cars and things of that nature, and so many spaces, the nine spaces in the front. You're not following the plan by any stretch of the imagination. And in fact, the garage on the right side, which shouldn't be leased, it should be your garage, has three cars deep in some cases, parked three rows deep all the way along. And some of them unregistered, just sitting there, whatever. And that's also wrong. Okay? That's, if you have a plan, you submitted, and your lot should look like that plan all the time.
The excess vehicles that you're talking about, I think, are behind the, up near the street. Those are either sold or in for, to be repaired, so we can end up selling them. Those cars have stickers on them that say "Not for Sale" or "Sold."
You have nine spaces, they're clearly marked, the nine spaces.
Right.
They're clearly marked. Those are for display vehicles.
Correct.
If they're a sold car, it should be in the back someplace, right? Away from the front.
That is correct.
Not up in the front with all the other cars.
Right.
And all those other cars that are along the edge, where those were supposed to be spots for customers to come in and park, we have the same problem with the guy across the street who doesn't have spaces. His space is cleared for the customers coming in either, which creates a problem on the flow and all that kind of stuff. Look, you gotta, you gotta plan, you submitted the plan, you should be doing what's on the plan. It's as simple as that.
Could I invite you to come by so I can show you what we're doing, and then...
I know I had the plan with me when I went there today.
I understand.
Trust me.
But a lot of times, I don't have control of somebody who comes in and parks in the front.
Well, but...
All the time.
Sir, please don't sit there and pretend that I'm an idiot.
No, I'm not at all.
Okay? I know what's going on there, and so do you. Okay? Please don't think that I don't know what's going on. I do, I've been around a long time.
Hi, Henry.
I want to hold this until next week, until we get a little more defining about the two licenses and the two owners, somebody renting the garage and so on.
We need to get clarification from town council about the license itself. About three weeks ago, I went by, and there was probably, I didn't count exactly, but there was 15, 16 vehicles, looked like they may have been bought in a group or something. There were some vans and other stuff to the left side of the building. None of them were registered or anything else there. I don't know if you're buying and wholesaling cars out. I actually spoke to the Robinsons, who I know very well, and they actually recommended you highly as being a good business person. Because I asked them, I said, "I hate to go after people and pick on them, but it doesn't look like it's matching, there's too many cars there, et cetera." At the time, of course, I had no idea you were running two separate businesses, but I could obviously see, it looked like there was a repair business going on, because normally, if you sell used cars, you have to have a place to repair them under warranty, et cetera. I did ask the town, the Director of Inspecial Services, to stop by. He did stop by, he did not speak to you. He spoke to someone there. Just so you know, the person who he spoke to was quite rude and kind of, basically, virtually threw him out of the place.
I think that was the customer that was in.
I think it was the customer also, just so you know, they didn't help you at all.
I apologize for that.
It happens. You know, I'm not blaming you, because I know it wasn't you. But I think if you want, we can have the inspector go back and look at the place as well, and you can show them what you got. But he's gone this week, so we can't get back to next week. So what I'll do is, I'll reschedule Patrick for the 16th, if you want to make a note.
Okay.
All righty. I'm sorry about this, but, you know, we...
No, it's okay.
Well, it isn't this. The problem we have is, we're finally, as a town, starting to implement all the rules and regulations and actually enforce them, which we haven't done really in years. And everybody right now is feeling the brunt of what we're doing, but it has to be done, because it's got so far to the rock side.
Now, I wasn't aware that I couldn't rent out the garage.
I understand.
Is there some way that I can address that, or...
Well, we're gonna find out more information about it, and we'll let you know exactly what, what to do.
I'll get back to you and let you know what town council said. I'll see you in a minute.
Okay, so we're not trying to put you out of business or anything, we just want to make sure that you're following the rules. Look, we've had problems over the years with noncompliance, and it always causes us a problem. We always end up with complaints, and it's some of the biggest complaints that we have in our offices about noncompliance. And, you know, it shouldn't be. It should be very cut and dried, very simple, "I got a plan, I follow it, everybody's happy." Okay? And you can make money that way, you know? You don't need to come in here and listen to us, hop at you, and you don't need the building inspector going to your place and be hopped on, and you need all the things you need in order to function with your business. But on the other hand, you gotta do for us, too, what you need to do.
16th.
16th, see you then.
Please.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you before, though.
Excuse me?
I'll get back to you before then.
Thank you.
Okay, next is an application for a change of license. Al L Corporation, DBA, Al's Woodburning Oven Restaurant, 3136 Cranberry Highway. Okay, let's see what they're doing here. All right, let me just get the change, what they're making.
They're making pizza.
They're making, they do make pizza.
They make good pizza.
I've eaten there quite a few times. All right, so, "The hours during which alcoholic beverages may be served are Memorial Day to Labor Day, Sunday through Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Tuesday, after Labor Day, after Labor Day, Memorial Day, to Memorial Day, that's after Labor Day. Monday, 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Tuesday closed. Wednesday and Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. And Sunday, 10:00 to 9:00 p.m."
Winter hours.
So, those are winter hours. So, basically, they're setting the winter different from, from their, what do you call it? So, that's what I move, that we approve their change of hours.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony.
Any questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0.
All right, great. There you go. All right, applications for one-day liquor license. Westport River Vineyards and Winery. This, we've done this plenty of times, is Sunday, October 6, 2018, and Sunday, October 7, 2018, from 10:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. to be held at the Cranberry Harvest Festival, 158 Tyonet Road, Wareham. And they're going to be pouring wine, obviously, from 10:00 to 4:00. I move we approve this.
Motion by Patrick. Who seconded it? Tony? Mary? Second by Mary. Any questions on the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0. Hope everybody has a chance to go out the next couple of days there.
All right, next we have a request for signs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, this is for Grumpy's 5K Race. Boy, what nice printing.
Claire's daughter did that.
Is it really? This is good printing, wow. Some of the best printing I've ever seen. 77 Charlotte Furnace, West Wareham, Mass. This is for signage to be placed, let's see, Tyonet Road, Makepeace Property. Now, that's where it's going to be held. Okay, so here we go. The bumpout at Toby Homestead, the Onset Gazeebo, and Onset Banjel, Minnet Ave, Stillman Drive, Marion Road, and the entrance to the library.
Those are all okay.
I move we approve the locations.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions on the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0.
All right, we actually, I can do it under 48 hours, or I can bring it up under business if you want. I guess we have another one that came in late.
Want to do it in 48 after?
We can do it, we can do it under 48. Actually, you know what? We could have done it under license and permits.
Why don't we go through B, C, and D, and we'll get that at the end.
All right. So, the next one would be, let's see.
Donation.
Yeah, the donation. All right, so this is a donation from the B-O-B-P-O-E Wareham, New Bedford Lodge, number 73, Box 566, East Wareham, and it's to the Lukey Playground in the amount of $1,500. And I move we accept the gift.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. I'm just going to make a quick statement. As a member of the Elks, I'll abstain just out of parents.
Did you want me to sign the letter?
No, I'll sign the letter. It doesn't matter at this point. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 1-4-0-1.
Okay. Next up is any other business not reasonably expecting 48 hours in years? Oh, wait, we still have the, the-
Number C and number D. No.
Not sure that we have any.
Conservation restriction.
Oh, the restriction. Oh, yeah.
Yep.
You'd have two unhappy people if you passed that one by.
Oh, yeah. Where's the unhappy people? There they are. They would be-
Not yet anyway, right?
They'd be unhappy if we bypassed this thing. All right, yeah, this is the conservation restriction for the property, and there's a name for this thing, right? The property?
Stony Run.
Stony Run.
Thanks.
Yeah, 900 Main or 600 Main?
600 Main.
600 Main.
You realize if you would bypass this, Mrs. Slaven would be here within five minutes.
Oh, yeah, next week she'd be right up there.
She'd be here in five minutes.
You think she's watching?
If she has no life.
She's critiquing us as we talk.
So, go ahead.
Do you want us to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, well, this is, the town meeting in April approved a conservation restriction be held by the selectmen. In return, we get community preservation funds to pay for it, which we've done. So, we have drafted a conservation restriction, which follows as close as we can the outline set forth by the E-O-E-E-A up in the state. And we, meaning the Wareham Land Trust, and you people, the Board of Selectmen, should agree on what this looks like. Then it will go, when we do agree, then it will go to the E-O-E-E-A with a fancy application, and they will review it and decide whether they like what they see, and may come back with changes, in which case, we will be back to you with what they say should be changed or ask that should be changed.
Okay.
That's where it stands. That last process might take months. They're slow up there, yeah. Just a quick question. Who's holding the CR?
You.
We are.
The Board of Selectmen.
And only the Board of Selectmen. I was very heartened to see that no other town boards were named.
Okay. You're all set with that?
Yeah, I've gone through it. It's fine.
I know town council's gone through it also. When we vote on this one too, since I'm a member of the land trust-
[laughing]
-and also a steward for a certain piece of property-
Okay.
-I will vote to abstain as far as the vote goes.
All right, I move we approve the agreement between the Board of Selectmen, the Wareham Land Trust, which is what I have in my hand.
600 Main, yep.
600 Main Street.
Have a motion? Second? Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions?
Nope.
None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 4-0-1.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will send it to the state and be back with their comments.
Crush your fingers.
Should not be a problem.
No.
Thank you.
Looks pretty much like the usual boilerplate for them that they like, so.
Thanks for all your hard work, guys.
Thanks.
All right, there you go. All right, now we have town meeting, town meeting articles.
Mr. Sullivan, we have anything updated for capital or anything at all? All the numbers are still waiting?
We will not know the numbers until probably Friday, right before town meeting. So, there's no reason to hold off and keep on putting it-
I think the town moderator just fell out of her seat, but that's what it is.
She's freaking out back there. Okay.
See, I told you ahead of time.
That worked out really well, didn't it?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, people.
Good old live television.
Other business not previously anticipated 48 hours.
You have something.
We do have one. Onset Four Squares Church, 2629 Cranberry Highway, for the trunk or treat on October 31st. The event at Lobesfield and Onset, and they want to put signs at Depot Street, the island between Lobesfield and the bumpout at Toby, Onset Ave, West Central Ave, and that's it. So, I move that we allow them to put the signage up.
I think that's all okay.
Tony's got a question.
Isn't there another sign that was, signs that they were in the same spot?
What?
They want two at Depot Street on the islands between the, between Lobesfield and the bumpout. It doesn't quite, the way they've written it doesn't make sense, Tony, yes. But they're basically asking for Depot Street, that island where the traffic comes, like four different ways.
Yeah, and they're putting two on Onset Ave.
Because that's basically town property there.
And when central, West Central Ave, there's an island there.
Yeah, Lobesfield, the bumpout at Toby, two on Onset Ave, wherever they're going to do it, and West Central Ave and the island.
Right.
On the Onset Ave, that may most likely is probably going to be on private property, which means they'll get the approval of the person who owns the property.
Right.
There's very little land on Onset Ave that we own.
Okay.
There's no, so I have a second also. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Mr. Sullivan?
Actually, it's a little known fact, the town owns the entire strip. It's roughly, there's a whole another section that's a lot, that's in people's properties all along Onset Ave.
I'm not talking about the old railroad station line there. We all know about that one. We don't want to get into that at all, since everybody is basically taking that and made it their own property.
Boy, that's come up a few times, hasn't it, over the years?
We don't want to go anywhere near that.
I'm surprised you know about that. That's old. That goes way back. We used to have trouble with that way, way, way back.
We had a couple of issues where she got involved with, so you know, way too well.
That goes way back.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0. Education 101 today.
Next is town admin, did you sign it? You have to sign it.
Yeah, I haven't signed anything.
I don't sign anything.
All right. A town administrator's report is next up, sir.
Thank you. We have a request, and it would actually be the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to sign this letter. When I'm just asking if there's no opposition, we move forward on it. There's the Robertson's Digital Billboard that's on Cranberry Highway. The state's actually looking to see if we're okay with them trimming a limited number of trees in the median strip adjacent to the lot, and on the lot needed to crown the trees, especially for reasonable continued visibility from both directions. Tree work is to be performed by a certified arborist in accordance with the standards of Mass Commonwealth, the Commonwealth of Mass Permits Division.
Move approval, authorize the chair to sign.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions on the board? Just so everybody knows, I went out to the area on Route 25 where the proposed sign is going to be on Robertson's property, and you cannot see in certain areas because of the trees there. And since Mass DOT is going to allow it to happen, which is unusual, so it's fine.
Yeah.
And just so people know, we will be getting a certain dollar amount per year for the signs being there.
That's right.
And on top of that, we get use of the sign for announcements, et cetera, all during the year as well. These will be digital signs. They may be actually broken up into four blocks per side, so there might be like four advertisements at the same time. It's going to be, it's going to help the town quite a bit, actually, besides not only the funding, but the idea if we had an emergency or if we have basically events going on.
The sign exists now, so.
Yeah, and actually, in the, when the-
It's there, you just can't see it.
-young lady went missing, we used the electronic billboard on Cranberry Highway to post an alert as well.
It's a new electronic one. It's not up here.
It's the one way in the back of their property.
Yeah, but that, you can't see that one. This is going to be a whole new one.
Oh, they're going to add a different one? They're going to take the other one down?
Yeah, it's going to be a big digital piece.
That's fine.
Okay, any other questions? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
5-0-0.
Zafias Wellness says that they are our third retailer that we've approved, subject to a suitable location.
Third marijuana retailer.
Yes, third marijuana retailer. What is that?
You left out that detail.
Oh, third marijuana retailer. The location they've chosen is 3119 Cranberry Highway in East Wareham. It's appropriately zoned. It's not within 1,500 feet of another retail marijuana operation. It seems to fit where the board had a preference on that end of Cranberry Highway, so if there is no issues, we'll move forward with the host community agreement.
I move final approval.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions on the board?
I just want to make an observation. Last night, the town of Bourne overturned their original decision to legalize the retail sale of marijuana.
Of course they did.
So, the citizens of Bourne will be happy to know that this facility will be up and running and close to them for their needs.
Do you want that to go up on the billboard?
I can't even, I can't even believe it.
Why, yes, yes, I do.
I can't even believe it.
You have to have a sense of humor there. So, the sign's going to say, "Stop and get high in Wareham." Good. Okay.
That's unbelievable.
It's only in America. Any questions on the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstain, 5-0-0. I'll be glad to sign that for you.
And that's all?
That's it.
And on a higher note?
Yeah, he's on reports.
Yes. And Tony, anything? Mary?
No, I think we've talked enough about the school department and other things. And although I will, I just want everybody to know that I'll be at the school committee meeting come Thursday night because they're going to vote on the financing agreement, which is the 20 years plus, for your ratification, the 20 years, the financing increment.
Right, the level.
Yes.
They've invited myself. I do have the other meeting going on, so I've asked Mr. Foster to attend. That can go over the bonds and such.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, I think there's some, I think this, you know, the school committee's probably just wants to know why they're making the decision too, I would say.
Well, you kind of put it in their laps.
Yeah, it's, if it were a police station, we would be making the decision. It's a school, ergo, the school committee.
Well, that's very nice of you to give him that rein, so I don't really see why they should have a problem with it.
I'm all hurt.
See, he's smiling, you know, it's a, I'll tell you about it.
Who knew that you would be the funny one tonight?
It might be interesting to ask him to look at a 15-year bond as well, to see